City Council meeting of October 1st, 2018 order. We do have a quorum. Let's please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda? Approve the agenda as posted in ordinance, in accordance with the open meeting on here and place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushak, second by Councilmember Lildgren to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes for the special work session meeting of September 17th, 2018 and the regular meeting of September 17th, 2018 and the closed meeting of September 17th, 2018 are enclosed. What is the wish of the council?
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zucka, second by Alderman Hercock for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills, checks number 99305 through 99384. I think that six isn't supposed to be in there. Totalling $476,061.86. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Conofla, second by Councilmember Hanson to approve the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. We have none. Consent agenda, application for exempt permit, raffle. St. Mary's Church, approve. Economic Development Authority minutes, July 2018, receive. Morrison County Attorney's Prosecution Report, July and August 2018, receive. Planning Commission Minutes, August 2018, receive. Police Report, August 2018, receive. Public Works Report, August 2018, receive. Renewal 2:00 AM, on sale liquor license, Beer Bellies, approve. Show License, Starry Eye Brewery, October 12th through October 14th, 2018, approve. What is the wish of the council on the consent?
Make motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zucka, second by Alderman Hercock to approve the consent. Any discussion?
Mr. President, just quickly, Chief, how's that 2:00 AM been working out in the city? Has there been so much for problems or?
Any complaints that I'm aware of as far as doing the credit? Nothing huge.
Okay.
Just quite a little, our place.
Okay. Well, good to know. Thank you.
When they have these, like the west side has music nights, is there a certain time they have to shut them down?
I think we've been shutting them down at, it was supposed to be 12, I believe, when they ran over. The guys had to go and shut them down from 12.
Yeah, I think we stopped at 12.
Yeah, a couple complaints about that.
It just varies from our noise ordinance at the 10:00, 10:00 PM deal. That's why I'm sure from 10:00 to the midnight, but... Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings and lettings, public hearing. Resolution 2018-46, adopt final assessment rule. Public Improvement 378, table from 9:04. Greg?
So this evening, we've got the final assessment hearing for Project 378. That's our 2018 projects. We do have the affidavit of publication as well as the mailings to the individual property owners. A number of different segments. The first one we're going to talk about is Fifth Street Northwest. This first segment on the south was a petition portion of the project. Looking at the area in general, staff initiated the northern block of this stretch. We've got Fourth Avenue that's paved, Fifth Street that was paved, and so we were looking at doing this stretch this year, which is what we've done. The project need, just so that the public and everybody understands why we did the project, is an existing gravel road where we had a petition for curb and gutter. We looked at sanitary sewer, it was an eight-inch clay pipe from 1964. The water main was in decent shape. It was a six-inch ductile iron pipe from 1977. Again, the northern section that we looked at here was staff-initiated. That was an existing gravel road, which we'll see in a little bit. And then there was an eight-inch PVC pipe for the sanitary sewer that was in decent Looking at the televising reports of the existing sanitary sewer, you can see where there were cracks along the stretch. Some of this, this stretch here actually had the top cut off of the pipe. Cracks all the way around the sanitary sewer where infiltration, water was able to get in and then eventually down to our waste plant and unnecessarily treated at that point. You can see water flowing in through the gravity there as well. Another video illustrating that. So the improvements that we have on this stretch, we put in a 32-foot urban section with curb and gutter, five inches of aggregate base and our typical three and a half inches of bituminous pavement. We included storm sewer improvements, catch basins at the intersection. We're able to leave the water main as it is in the sanitary sewer. We did replace that as you saw the condition of it between Third and Fourth Avenue Northwest. The next stretch that we've got here is on Eighth Street Southeast. Eighth Street between Trunk Highway 27, which is also First Avenue Northeast, all the way down to Fifth Avenue Southeast. We had multiple sewer backups on this stretch, frozen water service lines. It did have a PSL rating of three, which means that the blacktop is in poor condition. The water main was installed anywhere between 1938 and 1949 in various stretches of time. It was a six-inch cast iron pipe that was installed there. The sanitary sewer was 1949 with an eight-inch clay pipe. And then the storm sewers were installed between 1970 and 1974 at the crossings. Here you can see what it used to look like. We've got patches throughout the area, curb and gutter, pretty beaten up on both sides Looking at the televising report, more or less, there's roots, roots, and more roots in this stretch. This is where it's actually broken out on top. You can see there's roots basically on the top side of it right there. This is a stretch of sanitary sewer pipe where there's a seg in the, in the pipe, in the original pipe or the existing one that we removed. As the camera gets further and further down, you can see the water level gets deeper and deeper. That's where stuff begins to back up and that's where plugs will, will start to form and back up sanitary sewer. So once the water got to the, to the camera, that's basically half of the capacity of our pipe. So it was, it was time to replace that stretch. The improvements that we installed on Eighth Street Southeast, it was a 10-inch sanitary sewer pipe that we installed there. We've only assessed at an eight-inch because the oversizing cost is to extend that sewer farther upstream. Six-inch water main along that stretch as well. We stubbed out the services, both sanitary and water main to the property line. Storm sewer improvements is at the intersection and then a 32-inch curb or urban section in this stretch as well. Another section that we looked at is Edgewood Road. This was a petition project. An individual would like to build a house on the corner over there, and so they need to get sanitary sewer and water to serve that particular property. As you can see, the road's not in terrible shape. I believe it was a PSL rating of seven, but there's no sewer, no water, no storm sewer in this stretch. It's a rural section. So the improvements that we installed is eight-inch PVC sanitary sewer pipe, eight-inch water main in that stretch as well. This is a rural section, so it's 26-inch rural section curbing, or excuse me, ditches to contain the storm water, similar to what was there before. Put in five inches of aggregate base and three and a half inches of blacktop, which is typical for our streets. Another stretch that we've got here is Front Street as well as Wood Street. We reconstructed that section of it. That actually had a PSL rating of seven, again, decent shape, but unfortunately, the horizontal and vertical curves for that stretch do not meet the needs for our detour route in 2019. So looking at the sanitary sewer, looking that we would potentially need to do something for our detour route, we looked at, is the underground in decent shape or not? And in that case, we didn't know the age of our sanitary sewer pipe. Our maps go back to about 1900. We don't have any records when that was put in. It shows up on that map. So it's early 1900s for that, that pipe as well. And then the existing retaining wall between the dam, it actually looks like it's concrete slabs that are stacked up on one, on top of one another to form that, that retaining wall, which is a concern of mine, but it's, right now, the way it sits, there's green space there, so it's not as, as concerning as if it was traffic. This is the area I was talking about in terms of the concrete slabs. So we've since moved that away from there. The road kind of goes over like this. This is now a green space in between the sidewalk and the roadway. We flattened this grade and as well as this curve to allow the detour traffic to run through there much more smoothly. So the improvements, again, we put in eight-inch sanitary sewer pipe. We put in a six-inch ductile iron pipe on Wood Street. We abandoned the existing six-inch that went, rent through, basically mid-block back here. There was a six-inch water main that actually ran right through here. We've abandoned this stretch because it's no longer needed. And then we've got new water main on here that we've replaced from basically the alleys 32-foot urban section, curb and gutter, and our typical five inches of aggregate base and three and a half inches of bituminous. Again, this allows for traffic to run near our downtown through our 2019 project, not at it, but near it. And then it also allowed for the redevelopment of that adjacent property. Project funding for this, for the 2018 projects, originally we were looking close to a 50/50 split after the bids came in and looking where the prices for all the different items came in. It was 37.63 roughly for the split for the assessment. So the city picked up more of the, the portion of it, but that's where the funds, that's where the, that's where the splits came in with our pricing that we got. Assessable amounts for this project, 32-foot urban is at 27.77. That actually went down from what our preliminary estimate was. The 26-foot rural was at 15.74. That's up slightly, but both the sewer and the water were down, so that kind of offset those in the, in the rural section. Our sanitary sewer services, those are still the same as in the preliminary at 600 and 800. And then our water service lines, these are still the same as what they were proposed in our preliminary assessment.
Correct.
So the city intends to sell obligation bonds for this project. Property owners with a permanent and total disability or who meet income guidelines are 65 years of age or older may apply for deferment. Members of the National Guard or other military services, as defined by Section 19190.05, may also qualify for deferment. We do intend to sell bonds, or excuse me, the interest rates for the assessments would be over 15 years at 5%. They would be payable in equal installments. There is no interest if it's paid by October 31st of this calendar year. They can pay anytime between now and then the 15 years, all or a portion of it. Interest is accrued to December 31st of that year. If you pay before October 31st, if it's after October 31st, but before December 31st, it's for the succeeding year. Any questions on the 2018 projects?
Did we put in an eight-inch water line on Edgewood Drive just because it ends and doesn't?
It'll ultimately loop up back around, so that's...
Most we did six and that, we did eight. Is it just because it stopped?
It's for, it's for the looping. We have a water model that we put those pipes in to see what's best to serve that area for pressure, and that's what it showed to, to put in there. So there's not a whole lot of looping and such going on in the, in that area, whereas throughout the rest of town, there's sufficient looping where the water connects, either on the avenues and such, to be able to increase that pressure. So that's why it was an eight versus a six.
Greg, are we addressing our, did we address that issue that was discussed at length by the council at 806 Second Avenue Southeast with the curb stop placement?
That's coming up. If you want me to jump into that now, I definitely can.
Nope, that's right.
Well, at some point we will, but if you want me to, I can right now.
Um...
Might as well jump into it. So we've got, you asked me to take a look at number of service lines and such that are unique throughout Little Falls. Little Falls, the original plat was done in 1856, I remember was, if I remember, was to date. So we're a very old community. Normally, when you have a development today, you don't have alleys. The sewer and water all goes in at one point in time so that everybody has services off of the front. As you can see, these, the areas in red are all private service lines for various parcels. Now, it's not necessarily that this serves just one person, whereas in this case, I think there's like three of them on them. This one has three as well. So there's a number of them that have multiple, multiple individuals served off of that particular line. And the reason that is, it occurred that way, for instance, down here, this water line was installed before there was water available over here on, on this stretch. So the folks along this avenue wanted to have, wanted to, wanted to have sewer and water available to their house, so they ran a service line to serve those for houses in that instance. So because Little Falls is an older community, you start to see some of those unique characteristics in terms of how water, how service is being provided to those various, those parcels. If they wanted it before service was available, they'd put in a service line, even though it was a longer service line to those particular locations. You know, here's a kind of a blow up of that particular one. This is just the west side. You can see there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18 different locations that have those service lines. Jumping to the east side, those 13 of them over there. Again, some of them have multiple services on them. I know there was one down here, actually on Eighth Street where it, it went through private property, went down the alley, actually, it's right here, went through private property down the alley, and then it served some of those up on Ninth Street. So, I mean, there's a, there's a number of different situations, and these are all the only ones that we know of, where we've done projects in the past or had to locate them because of water shut offs or something. If you pay your bill every month, we don't necessarily need to know where that curb stop is at because there's, we don't have to go to that, that location. We've got a lot of them known, where we know where they're at, but there's going to be some that are not on this map that we just don't know about. And until we do some more investigating, we're not going to know. But there's quite a few of them out there that we, we have. In regards to the one at 806, so this is how the service line went before we did any construction. You've got the old water main over here on the west side of the, the road. There was a service connection right here, basically right underneath that storm sewer. It followed the storm sewer and then this had a T to serve this water shut off to this house, and then it continued over here over to this one. So what we did, rather than putting it in the street where it's sometimes difficult to get to, we moved it down slightly to the south, put two service lines over. We have two of them right next to each other. This one goes over and connects up to where this line goes over to this house, and the other one comes over here and connects up to the existing line, basically underneath that, that storm sewer. It's a one and a half inch iron pipe that's, that's down there. We did insulate it where we connected the, the service just to provide some freeze, freeze protection to it, but that's where that connection was at. I know talking with the guys in the office, they've been there for, you know, 20 years. They've worked with my predecessor, who's been here 40-some years. That does provide a lot of continuity in terms of what's been done in the past and consistency. And so when we do the assessment rolls, basically I do go to them and say, what have you seen in this loca, this type of situation before? In that situation, they've said, yes, we've assessed just the water service to that particular lot. You know, you look at the parcel to the north up here, they've got that much service line that was replaced, they were assessed $700. This particular lot, he had this much service line replaced, he was assessed $700. So it wouldn't be much different if this house was abandoned or gone altogether and he wanted to build in the back. If he had a service line to here, it would be the same situation. We'd go to the front of the property and then have that as a $700 assessment to it. So I feel the assessment roll is, is consistent with what we've done in the past and fair to the individuals along there, but ultimately, that's a decision that the council will have to, to decide upon. I know we've had that comment at our last meeting about a month ago, but that's, that's where staff was at with it. Does that answer your questions?
I don't remember it being that much about his assessment as how far away his curb stop was.
True. This house was built in 1908. This one was built in 1912. The water main and through here was put in in 1948. So back in the day, you know, somebody decided that they only needed, I don't remember the width of this lot, if it was 40 by 40 or 50 by 50, but somebody decided they needed a much smaller lot than, than what we would allow today. 1974 is actually when the land use ordinances came into place. We wouldn't allow a lot split similar to this currently, just because of what we see with the issues of serving those particular parcels with that and the lot size. So I, I would say this would not be allowed. It's a legal nonconformity. It's there, we know we have to serve it. But in terms of that service line, if a person owned that entire lot and they chose to be in the back, they still would potentially have a long service line. Just because they run it down the boulevard shouldn't alleviate that responsibility of having the house that far away from, from that, that main.
But, but that's entirely not the case here. The reality is, there's two residents there. And I, I mean, you're talking the years.
Yep.
They obviously didn't pick that. I thought we had pretty much a consensus that if we were going to assess Schuman, that he should have a line to the curb stop in front of his house.
Well, that's what I was under the impression too.
Me also.
Well, and I didn't know if it was just that or if we'd be responsible if there was issues from where it is to his house. I, you know, I know we had, I thought we had talked about both of them, so I didn't know if we had said, okay, it's this one, but I thought it was like, okay, we either want to hear this or this. Otherwise, if there is problems there and it comes before us, I'd have a hard time holding him responsible, just because it seems like something we created, even though it was already there.
Correct.
Sounds like 31 instances approximately that we know of for sure throughout the city, so I don't know what the perfect solution is.
But I kind of think we have those 31 instances, but we wouldn't allow one of those to happen now, so why are we allowing it to happen now? I mean, we wouldn't let somebody hook up their house that way now, but we're doing it.
Well, in this case, there's no other way. I mean, he would have to come down the boulevard to hook up here regardless, because we don't have water in this, this stretch. The other alternative is if we looped the water main up to Ninth Street, but then basically it's for one, one person to feed off of. So it doesn't make a whole lot of sense from our perspective to put in a six-inch main just for that, that instance. We have other instances where there are long services. For instance, up over here on First Street Northwest, the Burlington Northern Shack up on the north, they have basically half a block worth of, of service line from the hydrant to their, to their shop. I know across the road on First Street, there's a number of them that actually get water from Lindbergh Drive. They come from Lindbergh Drive off of Second Avenue, down the alley to the backside of their, their, their property, even though water is now stubbed out on the front. So if we are going to go down that route where we start taking responsibility for those, those long service lines, I think we also need to start taking a stronger stance and saying, if you've got a long service line such as these and there is water in the front, you now have to hook up to the front as opposed to having that long service line because it's not fair to us. You know, I'll just use Schumann's as an example. If we've got water along in here, which we don't, but if we have water here, we're not going to want to have responsibility for all of this if they have the ability to connect right there.
Well, I don't think that, I would agree with that. I mean, if you've got the water, but I think the point was that he's got that curb stop out there and he's got to pay, I mean, if something goes wrong with, with his service line, normally the owner, the house is responsible from the house to the curb stop. That's, that, that's his, but...
Which is usually the property line.
Which is usually the property line. Now he's saying that if something goes wrong, according to what I remember from the last time, he would have to be responsible for everything all the way down to the, down to there.
Correct.
And he's saying that's not fair. And I agree with him that, you know, if something goes wrong and he'd have to pay to have that all fixed up when the other ones are right there.
Council, Council President, can I ask? And so his, his service line actually still is under the street for part of that section as well?
Yes, it's right under here.
Yeah.
Yep. So our project only went to, basically Eighth Street was the, the limits of our project. When we started digging into finding out where every curb stop and such as that, we had to connect up those two parcels. Those two properties have to have water shut offs to them. So we could have either stubbed it out and connected right here and left them two like that, but it's not really fair to, to do that. So we provided two shut offs, one for this one and then one for this line, so that if this one doesn't, doesn't pay the bill, they can shut that one off and vice versa for there. We'd just like to have two separate lines for the two separate parcels.
How many more houses would go up to Ninth Street?
There's one across the alley. That's not hooked up to it, though. That one's hooked up off, off of Ninth.
So this is a one-off. I mean, it's for this area.
And there is a similar situation with other properties on, on avenues along Eighth Street.
I mean, there's right across the avenue here, this one is served down here as well. So it's, it's a very similar situation.
It just seems odd that, you know, a line that runs under our street that's not on their property that they're responsible for.
Is it the case that, that Second Avenue property would be responsible for the line that's serving under the street?
Yes. Yep.
On both directions?
Both directions, yep. Yep. Because again, when they, when they subdivided this house off or this house off from it, they had to provide water somehow. And so the decision was at the time, again, this is probably 100 years ago, to run it down the boulevard over to here because there's not an easement across that lot. And that's the only option that they had. And I would presume at the time that that water line was put in, it was probably gravel road, easiest area to, to dig in. And that's where they put it.
So if his water line goes bad, he's going to have to dig up the street and then repair the street as part of his cost also?
If it were my house, I probably wouldn't dig up the street because the, the blacktop is going to be expensive. We do have right of way. I would go right down the right of way.
But I'm almost positive that we provided the instructions that that's what we already wanted done. Am I incorrect?
Because I remember you saying, I said, I said, well, you said you couldn't get at it right now because you said that the city could do it, and you said we couldn't get it right now because of the craft fair and stuff. And I, and I remember saying, well, you know, we got October, November if the weather stays right to get, to get that in there. And, and you said that's a possibility. And I thought that's where we had ended it with, that it was going to be done on the right of way. I mean, that was my impression at the end of that meeting.
Thought the council president said, get the crew out there with a baccio. I mean...
So there was discussion, but there wasn't any necessarily vote or this is how we're going to do it. That, that's what I'm looking for.
That's because we had to table the public hearing to begin with. So we should have had this done already.
I mean, this is a very similar situation to like Third Avenue Northeast that we did last year, where there was four of them out there. In that instance, we put in a water, water main of six inches opposed to the inch and a half that was up there. But we've got, we've got ones all over town that...
So what, last year when we did the six-inch water main, how did that, that was a city cost then?
We put that in and then we assessed back to the property owners.
700 or 1,200?
1,200 for a new one.
So that was considered new service?
Yep.
I think it's just a necessary nuisance. Every time somebody wants to connect to one of these parcels with a, a non-city installed line, I won't even call it private because it's not on their property, it's going to have to be addressed on a case-by-case basis. I, I just think a resident is owed a connection at a curb stop at their property line. The fact that it doesn't make sense to put a water main there shouldn't penalize them. And I understand it doesn't make sense to loop it up to Ninth Street, so in my opinion, I think we should put a service line that's city-owned and city right of way to a curb stop in front of his house. I, I have that.
The minimum main diameter that we can put in is six inch. So if, if it's a city main because of flushing and, and fire protection, we have to put in a six-inch minimum. If it's a service line, you can go smaller than that, but that's... it's a service line, you can go smaller than that. But that's where you get into juggling where does that, that split between responsibility come into play.
Council President, can I, what's, what's the distance of a service, service line that is reasonable to, you know, provide adequate pressure? What, how long, how, how far would an inch and a half service line provide adequate pressure for that? I mean...
Well, inch and a half is gonna provide ample pressure for quite a ways. I mean, these, the, the service lines that we've replaced with are, are one inch.
In the, in the circumstances that we have, you know, we're, we're only serving one, one parcel that direction.
Correct.
And that's only gonna be one parcel that's gonna be served in that direction.
That is correct.
Main would be absolutely unnecessary.
Correct.
But, so a service line would be the direction that we, we'd go.
True.
And it would provide adequate pressure.
Yes. I mean, a one inch would do, I have no doubt that's gonna provide ample pressure for that stretch.
Any other questions from the council? Or are we opening up for public comment?
So what do we need to do so that we can go ahead and fix it correctly?
So if we want to put that all the way over to there, we include that in the, when we adopt the assessment role, that direction to staff. If we wanted to update the policy on how we assess, we'd want, that'll be a future discussion, but I think I would want direction from the council. If that's, if this is what we want to ultimately do at some point with future projects, then I, I want that direction so that we can incorporate it into the policy. So we know going forward that this is how we're gonna handle them and address those as well.
Council President, could, could we include the direction on fixing or changing the service lines as a separate motion alongside of the public assessment rule?
Yeah.
I, I think I concluded that the interest was still providing the same assessment amount.
Yeah, I, well, from my memory, right by collection, I asked him, I said, if we run this, if we run this line to your house, will you be okay with the assessment that we're giving you? And he said, yes, it would be. And I thought, okay, then that's what we're gonna do.
It's consistent with
He's fine with the assessment. It's just that he wants responsibility of a line that's not on his property. So.
And long as what we establish, we continue.
Correct.
And staff has direction because I don't think it's right to, for us to go over this on a case-by-case basis.
Right.
When a, a policy change or ordinance change, whatever, would cover it all.
Correct.
I'd much rather do that after, but
Yep.
Treat this one individually right now.
Yep.
Any other questions? Opening up for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Anyone from the public wish to speak? Third and final call. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing at 8:03. What is the wish of the council on Resolution 2018-46? Motion for approval?
So moved. I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Gushick, to approve Resolution 2018-46. Any discussion?
Just that, we have that. It was recommended to
Are we gonna include that with this?
After that. Follow it.
Council President, make a motion following this one for staff, to direct staff to provide the service line and the curb stop at, at the property line.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Resolution. Call a roll, please.
Hurcock.
Yes.
Gushick.
Yes.
Lundberg, oh, excuse me, Zilka.
Yes.
Hanfler.
Yes.
Lildegren.
Yes.
Knopfla.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Carries.
Motion. Somebody wanna make a motion to install?
I'll make the motion.
City service line?
To install the city's service line up to the property.
You got the property address, Laurie?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Councilmember Knopfla, second by Councilmember Gushick, to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries Resolution 2018-52. Adopt final assessment role. Public Improvement 378A. Greg?
So we're looking at 378A. This is the final assessment hearing for that particular project. We do have the affidavit of publication as well as the affidavit of mailing to the property owners. This stretch is a 400-foot stretch extending sewer and water, or excuse me, yeah, sewer and water on Fifth Avenue Southeast, like I said, for about 400 feet. It was an existing gravel road. We did get a petition for that stretch. And then, as you can see, it's a gravel road. Here's where the hydrant, we're looking at extending that on the north side as well as through the center here with the gravity. The improvements included an eight-inch sanitary sewer pipe. We did have a 10-inch water main in there. Again, it was oversized to provide that pressure once we connect up to 18th Street. 24-foot rural section with ditches, so that's where the, the water would be conveyed. And then six inches aggregate base, again, to maintain that, that gravel road. And the feasibility study, we had roughly a 55-45 split. When the prices came in and the numbers were accounted for, it's basically a 70-30 split. The city is picking up more of that cost, but some of that cost did get shifted over to the assessment role or property owners as well. The assessments for this project on the sewer main, because it was more expensive, was at $35.11 per foot. The water main is at $47.93. A new six-inch service line is $1,000 apiece and the one-inch water service line is $1,200 apiece. This will also be at 15 years, a 5% spread over that term. Equal installments. If it's paid before October 31st of this year, there's no interest on those, those assessments. Property owners can pay at any point in time, between now and when it is paid off, a portion or all of it thereof. If you pay between, before October 31st, the interest is charged to that year. If it's paid after October 1st, it's succeeding year through December 31st. We do intend to sell general obligation bonds. If property owners have permanent disability or 65 years of age or older and it's homestead, then you may qualify for a deferment as well as the requirements for the Minnesota National Garden. Any questions on that?
Questions for her?
So this does not include, include a change order then that's coming up later tonight on there?
When we, when we calculated the rates for the project, we did have a contingency in, in there. So that is a, that does fall within that contingency for the project. So that will not affect the assessment rates.
Okay. Open up for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Anyone from the public wish to speak? Third and final call. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Hearing none. 8:08. We'll close the public hearing. What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to adopt 2018-52.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hurcock, second by Mayor Zilka, to approve Resolution 2018-52. Any discussion? Hearing none. Resolution. Call a roll, please.
Gushick.
Yes.
Zilka.
Yes.
Hanfler.
Yes.
Lildegren.
Yes.
Knopfla.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Hurcock.
Yes.
Carries.
Lettings, leaf and brush collection, City Sanitary Commercial. Award. Laurie?
Yes, we did request quotes for a fall leaf and brush collection. We received two quotes. City Sanitary was the low bid at $3,799. Bob Lemire Rolloffs Refuge and Recycling bid was $4,150. So would we, we would request that the council award the bid to City Sanitary. The leaf pickup will be Saturday, October 27th, rain or shine. Residents are asked to have their leaves in untied bags on the street. They'll get picked up and this will be paid for from the score grant money that the city receives.
And what's the date on the pickup?
October 27th.
Okay.
Saturday. Last Saturday in October.
What's the wish of the council?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Gushick, to award the bid to City Sanitary Commercial. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries City Facility Garbage Contract, Bob Lemire Rolloffs Refuge and Recycling. Award. Laurie?
Yes, every two years we will obtain quotes to pick up waste from our city facilities such as city hall, the street department, parks, all that kind of stuff. So we did email requests to both City Sanitary and Bob Lemire Rolloffs Refuge and Recycling. One bid was submitted, our one quote was submitted, that was from Bob Lemire, at $8,394.75 per year. The second quote from City Sanitary was received a day late and their quote was at $8,532.70. So we're requesting that the quote be awarded to Bob Lemire Rolloffs Refuge and Recycling.
What is the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Hanson, to award City Facility Garbage Contract to Bob Lemire Rolloffs Refuge and Recycling. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries Change Order Number One, Public Improvement 378A. Larson Excavating, approve. Greg?
Yeah, this evening we've got in front of you Change Order Number One. After looking at the, the project and, and kind of looking at how potentially 18th Street would eventually develop, we decided that it would be, make sense to lower the water, or excuse me, lower the water services and the water main where we would potentially have a, a gravity sanitary, gravity storm sewer in that stretch. In order to, to lower those water services there's, you have to dig deeper obviously and put a number of bends in to get underneath where that, that storm sewer would go. Everything from Trunk Highway 27 South drains to, to this particular ditch, which eventually gets out to the, to the MinDOT ditch where it's ultimately discharged to. The change order is in the amount of $12,214. Like I mentioned in previously that it is within the contingency that we've got for the project, so it doesn't affect the overall cost of our, our 2018 Fifth Avenue project. And so tonight we are asking the council to approve this Change Order Number One to Larson Excavating in the amount of $12,214.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hurcock, second by Councilmember Knopfla, to approve Change Order Number One, Public Improvement 378A. Any discussion?
It's already done anyway, correct?
What's that?
It's already done anyway.
They're in the process of doing it.
So when we go to put in a storm sewer, we won't have to re-dig that part and reinstall them, otherwise we'd have to do that.
We would have to do it at that point in time, correct. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries Summarized Conclusion of Performance Evaluation. City Administrator Rodamacher, receive. Mayor?
All right, the performance evaluation was completed and reviewed by the City Council for City Administrator John Rodamacher on September 17th, 2018. Results were reviewed with John on September 27th, 2018. Once again, there was some feedback from the council on how we could improve the evaluation process. And we had that discussion with John. The following is a brief summary. Ratings were on a scale of one through five, with five being excellent, four being above average, three average, two below average, and one poor. Areas rated were individual characteristics, professional skills and status, relations with elected members of governing body, policy execution, reporting, citizen relations, staffing, supervision, fiscal management, and community. The overall, overall rating was 4.16, which puts him above the above-average level, which I believe was spoken very highly of during the evaluation. Strengths were listed as budgeting and fiscal management, reducing of our city debt, innovative, planning for water and wastewater upgrades, and community involvement. And goals were discussed for 2019. That's all. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to receive.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Alderman Hurcock, to receive Summarized Conclusion of the Performance Evaluation. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries New Business Airport Commission Recommendation, Resolution 2018-60, Authorized Execution of Grant Agreement, Minnesota Department of Transportation, Office of Aeronautics, accept, adopt. Greg?
Yeah, Resolution 2018-60 is the state grant portion of it for the design of the crosswind runway. If you recall at our previous meetings, we had the federal grant, which was the largest portion of it. That was $174,000 and change dollar grant. This is the state grant in the amount of $9,683.91. The remaining of that, that amount for the design services would be, would be a local share split between the city and the county. And that comes out to, again, the $9,683.91. So tonight we are asking the council to approve this grant so that we can, again, get the $9,683.91.
What is the wish of the council on Resolution 2018-60?
Move to approve.
Same.
Got a motion by Councilmember Knopfla, second by Councilmember Lildegren, to accept and adopt Resolution 2018-60. Any discussion? Hearing none. Resolution. Call a roll, please.
Zilka.
Yes.
Hanfler.
Yes.
Lildegren.
Yes.
Knopfla.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Hurcock.
Yes.
Gushick.
Yes.
Carries.
Proposal for local option sales tax, approve. John?
Yes, this would be requesting approval for the flyer that we showed in the work session and then, I think, advertise for, within the record for the remaining time between now and the election.
What is the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushick, second by Alderman Hurcock, to approve the proposal for local option sales tax. Any discussion?
John, you talked about this being on the city website.
Yes, yeah. And then the, the, I only asked for the approval for the record just to ensure that we're, you know, that, that being the costly piece and, and there's a cost, you know, function to that. But this would be, the remaining assets we have, we'd be doing for free because of our own websites. And then I have contacts with the other media sources, radio station in particular, that I'm certain they would be open to having a discussion.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries Resolution 2018-68, firefighter benefits, adopt. John?
Again, from the work session, you heard from the representatives of the Fire Relief Association, they're requesting approval from the city to increase the Fire Relief Association's contribution benefit from 3,400 to 3,900 per service year for vested firefighters. This would mean that based on their SC form that they submit to the state on an annual basis, that, that funding level would still retain them over 106% funded based liability to, asset to liability ratio.
What's the wish of the council on Resolution 2018-68?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Hanson, to approve Resolution 2018-68. Any discussion?
As President, I would just like to add appreciation for all of our firefighters, entire team, all the great job that they do and which is somewhat evidenced by townships pretty much surrounding us, jumping onboard for our services. So, or for our assistance. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Resolution. Call a roll, please.
Hanfler.
Yes.
Lildegren.